Yeah, I see. Let's call this meeting of the, uh, regular meeting of the planning commission Thursday, January sixteenth to order, if you would, uh, the meeting is in, uh, in session, um, you'd, uh, stand and join everyone for the pledge of allegiance.
Okay.
Pledge allegiance to the Republic of America, its liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is approval, uh, as approval of the agenda. Do we have any motions? Yes, Will.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, include a discussion item on our, uh, city-owned historic property and meetings that will be taking place on the...
And this is a follow-up to an item that came up in the working session for the city council last time, correct?
That's correct. It's been discussed at the city council work session and a parks commission meeting this week.
Any objection to adding this to the agenda of new business? No objection. Please consider it added. Otherwise, is the, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. The second item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, uh, from the October tenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting, uh, of the, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries, the minutes are approved. The first, uh, large item on our agenda is the public hearing, um, and this is a recommendation on an ordinance to amend the official zoning map to rezone two hundred and seventy-three point eighty-nine acres from rural RL to mixed-use HMMU Hamlet. The property has four parcels at the corner of Rico Road and Vernon Grove Road. Mr. Morton, do you want to make an initial presentation about this, uh, just, just an overview of that?
Sure, sure, I can provide, um, an overview, as you say, of, of the project. Two hundred and seventy-three point eight-nine acres, um, at the corner, roughly, generally at the corner of Rico Road and Vernon Grove Road, uh, most of the property is south of those two roads, but about thirty acres of the, uh, of the property is on the north side of Rico Road. The, um, uh, I apologize. So it's mostly surrounded by, um, uh, probably many of the people here, um, and their property, um, mostly single-family residential, there's some, um, um, pasture land, um, immediately to the south is land that was recently rezoned, um, HMMU mixed-use Hamlet as a part of Saranby, um, was proposed on that property is twenty-six homes on that two hundred acres, so, um, fairly, uh, fairly, uh, rural, not very dense, um, development proposed there. The plan submitted, um, which we see in the left, on the left side here, on those, um, all of those documents up there, north is facing, um, facing left, uh, so, um, uh, you have to sort of tilt your head maybe a little bit to, uh, see what's going on. They propose, um, seventy-one percent of the property to be protected as open space and civic space, which is consistent with the zoning, which requires a minimum of seventy percent preservation. Um, they propose two hundred and seventy-four residential units clustered in four main areas, as you can see on the, um, on the plan. Uh, they, the plan shows all the required buffers around the perimeter, uh, hundred and fifty feet, um, around the outside, uh, the buffers in the zoning can be reduced to seventy feet where you have Hamlet on both sides of the road. What we see on the plan there still shows a hundred and fifty, uh, feet in, in those locations, although they show both lines where the seventy-foot and the hundred and fifty-foot line would be. Uh, it shows three entrances, uh, two on Rico Road, one serving just the northern area, the other immediately opposite Hopkins Road, um, serving the bulk of the Hamlet on the south side. There's also an entrance shown on Vernon Grove Road. However, the city limits, um, uh, development that can be, uh, accessed off of gravel roads, which Vernon Grove Road is, and so there is a proposed condition, uh, in the packet, um, one of the two pages of conditions is, uh, to limit access at that entrance to emergency vehicles only or bike, pedestrian, equestrian, those, those sorts of uses, so you wouldn't have regular traffic going in and out there on, uh, on Vernon Grove Road if it were to be approved. Um, the, uh, preservation, so because of the, uh, preservation requirement, a minimum of a hundred and ninety-one acres would be, um, uh, permanently set aside as civic space and open space. Uh, the plan also shows, uh, a little over an acre for non-residential uses. Um, the zoning for mixed-use Hamlet would require at least, um, ten thousand nine hundred and sixty square feet of non-residential floor area. Um, the applicant, um, is, has, what the applicant has in mind for those non-residential uses is, um, maybe office professional uses and eatery boutique clothing store. Of course, as we know, um, the market will dictate some of, um, what, uh, what can and can't happen, um, in a place like that. Uh, the Hamlet exceeds the city's threshold for, uh, requiring a traffic study. Um, the applicant is, uh, working on a traffic study, but we don't have it in hand right now. Uh, city council recommended the applicant conduct some community engagement. They have proposed, uh, this, not this coming Tuesday, Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, um, in the evening, um, that date's available, it'll be here in city hall. So that's the tentative date, we'll, we'll communicate, um, as the city, as best as the city can, um, with the, uh, the actual date is, I think the applicant is also planning on, um, publicizing the event, but expect it to be Tuesday, uh, the twenty-eighth of this month. Um, that would be an opportunity for the public to engage with the applicant, hear what they have to say about the, um, about the project. Again, a hundred and ninety-one acres, uh, to be protected, it would also protect over five thousand feet of road frontages with those a hundred and fifty-foot, um, buffers, and, um, uh, staff's recommendation is for now a deferral, continuation of the hearing until we get the traffic study, um, with the, the addition, if, um, council were to choose not to defer their decision, um, and were to choose to approve it, that they, um, approve it only with conditions.
Mr. Morton, thank you very much. We're going to move to the public comment period of this hearing, uh, and I'm going to start by reading the rules, we do that every time. The, if you desire to speak in support of or in opposition to this item, you must fill out a, one of these yellow public comment cards and give it to Ms. Witcher. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received. All speakers should identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if that's applicable, before beginning their presentation. In this case, each side will have thirty min, uh, go...
I think...
They'll do, uh, each side will have thirty minutes, those opposed, those, um, those, uh, in supporting the item, um, and if we need to, if we run on time, we'll deal with that at that point. The applicant may take as much time of the allotted time as the applicant desires. All others speaking in support of or in opposition shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Again, we will take a look at it and decide if we need to extend the allotted time aside when we get further into this. The applicant and all those speaking in support of the application will speak first, the applicant may choose to save some of the allotted time for rebuttal. The, those opposing the issue will speak next, if any time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebut the final remarks made by the applicant. Written comments in support of the issue will be read out loud if time remains, after all, basically, if time remains on either side, written comments will be read into the record, if not, they won't. They'll be received into the record, they won't be read in, um, depending on how much time is left for each side's, uh, presentations. Following the presentations by the applicant, those in speaking in support of the application and those opposing the application, um, the, uh, we will then, uh, uh, move into the discussion period of it. Ms. Witcher is going to keep track of time and will inform you when your allotted time is expired. During the public hearing, members of the planning commission shall listen to the presentation made by all who those, each of those persons who desire to speak. No action on the part of the planning commission is in order until the public comment period is complete and we move to the discussion period. In addition, the applicant shall not submit material to the city, to, to the commission during the meeting unless requested to do so by a commission member. All material which the applicant wishes to be considered shall be submitted to the city planner, uh, prior to the meeting, so the material may be included in the distribution packages. The distribution packages have been available since last week online, um, with the, uh, information that was submitted. So, at this point, um, we will start with the, those in favor, the applicant, uh, may start if you are prepared.
Good evening, my name is Chris West, uh, address is one thirty-five Wimberly Estates, Drive Noon in Georgia. The, the applicant, uh, on this matter is Rico Investments LLC. This, uh, as Mr. Morton stated, is an application to rezone two hundred and seventy-three point eight-nine acres from RL to the HMU mixed-use Hamlet. Appreciate, uh, everyone from, uh, the community and the neighbors coming out tonight. City of Chattahoochee Hills is a, is a unique place. I've been, I've, I live just, uh, about six miles south of the town, uh, and haven't lived here very long, about two years, but, uh, but from what I have gathered and witnessed from this community, it's, it's a special place, it's a unique place, it has a, a real sense of community, and the city has done something truly unique in Georgia to have the, uh, the land use code that it does, uh, it has a lot of controls in it, uh, can be good and can be bad, can provide, it does provide a lot of protections for the, the community at large, uh, it can be difficult, challenging if, uh, to exercise your individual property rights. And what this, this board and the city council is tasked with doing is balancing the rights of the individual property owner to do with their, their constitutional right of life, liberty, and property, we have the right to enjoy those things, to balance that with the good of the, the community, and you set forth in your, uh, in your code certain standards that, uh, as the law requires, that, that provides, that, uh, provides a set of ground rules to ensure that those rights on both sides are protected. This, um, what, what the applicant envisions for this property, I think from a planning perspective, makes a lot of sense. I've, uh, I've done projects in large communities and small ones and very sophisticated ones, very rural ones, from Charlotte, North Carolina to rural, the, the most rural parts of Georgia and, and other, uh, southeastern states, and, um, and I can tell you that the level of, uh, involvement and input in this community is, is unique, and, but, but when you look at, from a planning perspective, what is the, the highest and best use of this property? What has recently been done just to the south, probably makes a lot of sense in the sense of good use, smart planning, good controls over what's being done on the property. Development does happen, change does happen with land, there's only, there's, uh, there's only a, a finite amount of land, there's a certain amount of land, and we do want to be smart with how we, how we develop land, and, um, recently, the property just this, immediately south of us, which is adjacent to this property, uh, was, was recently rezoned to this same, um, uh, HMMU, the, the mixed, that mixed-use Hamlet designation, and, uh, we think that this, this property makes sense, uh, both from, from what the code would require or ask of the applicant, but also just from a, a market standpoint, uh, people are, are looking for, uh, a place to live, which is nice, which provides privacy, uh, which so many of you I know that you enjoy in your spaces out there, and there's a way to, uh, for us to continue for the other surrounding residents to have that, uh, and also allow this property to, to be developed, and, uh, much of that is within the code, because it is, anybody who comes in and builds houses or any development does have to meet very stringent standards, uh, within this community with regards to buffers, uh, with regards to ma- many, many things that are, that are set forth in the code, so, um, with that, well, I, I might just address a couple of questions that, that might come up. What is the, uh, what about, um, improvements in terms of sewer? What about water? There, the, the applicant owns property to the north that's also being, um, uh, developed, and there will be sewer from the city of Atlanta lines that are coming down to service that property, which will be extended to this property. Uh, there is water nearby, which, uh, which will also be, uh, extended down, so, um, I'm sure there'll be other issues that will come up, I'm actually going to reserve the rest of our time to answer any specific questions, uh, and unless the, the board members have any direct questions right now, uh, I see that the chairman wants...
We'll, we will handle that during the discussion.
Very good.
I'm confident there will be questions, so...
Yes, sir.
Right.
Thank you.
How much, uh, were there any other, for, Witcher? Okay. Thank you very much.
David Robinson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. My name is David Robinson. I live at seventy-six fifty Rico Road, number one, which is the Rico Lake community, and I'm a shareholder there. Rico Lake has a hundred and fifty-one acres that front, uh, on Rico Road, we front approximately seventeen hundred feet on Rico Road, and several hundred feet of it is directly across from this project. And I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed, uh, rezoning. I agree with staff's recommendation for deferral by the commission's consideration until the applicant provides a traffic study. Among other things, there's a very dangerous curve right at our driveway, and although the speed limit's forty-five, every pickup that goes by is going sixty. We need the traffic study for you to have proper consideration. I also am requesting deferral tonight until the applicant has held the meeting with the community. Although Rico Lake property is adjacent to the property, we were not informed of this until we saw the signs outside, and I believe it was Christmas Day, uh, we haven't had adequate time, really, to have any kind of an understanding of what this project is going to be. Local people have no understanding of the, the details of this project, other than what you see there, uh, which is just a cluster of phase one, and I think phase two, and then blank space, uh, phase three also, and a large, uh, open space for page four, phase four. So except for a couple of maps and charts, we have no understanding of what's going to be there. Are we going to have a, a mini Saranby, which would be lovely? Or are we having what, and, and I'll address it, uh, what went on in South Fulton County, which is now the city of South Fulton, uh, over the past twenty-five years? So, we would like this meeting to at least talk with Mr. West and, and any representative, uh, before your consideration, so that we can come back here and report, quite frankly, whether we're in favor of this because it looks good for our community, or whether we remain opposed. We like that opportunity, because right now, all we see are little, hundreds of little boxes. I, I lived, uh, at Rico Lake now for ten years, prior to that, I lived in the community, unincorporated community, it's like Rico was, it was called Cliftondale, which is closer to the perimeter, but in South Fulton County. Lived there for thirty years. When I moved there with my family in nineteen eighty-five, it was a community very much like, uh, Chat Hills is now, except for a few pre-nineteen seventy subdivisions, and I'm done. I fear that we're going to have another South Fulton here, by the way this is developing, but we'd like the opportunity to meet with the, uh, developer before your consideration and vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, Jack.
Good evening, Jackie Bridger, seventy-six fifty Rico Road, number twelve, also live part-time at Rico Lake. I'm the current president of Rico Corp, which owns Rico Lake, the property directly across from Vernon Grove Road, um, and from the, adjacent to the, to the proposed project. This area is, uh, quintessential Chat Hills, farms, creeks, hills, dirt roads, large tracts of land, and even an old fish camp from the nineteen forties, which is Rico Lake. Our community has, as Dave said, a hundred and fifty-one acres, but only thirty total lots. Some of those lots still don't even have homes on them, so our founders were certainly ahead of their time in terms of, uh, land conservation. What is being proposed is, um, is not a good fit here, and would destroy the character of this serene natural area around us. The sheer number of units in this plan is beyond comprehension. Even though homes would supposedly be hidden from view, does not mean they aren't there. Even if you can't see the two hundred and seventy-four homes from Rico Road, you would certainly see the traffic they create. We're also concerned that the added traffic would be dangerous since the entrances are in a curve, and it also seems premature that the commission would vote without knowing first about site distances and the results of the required traffic study. We disagree with several parts of the applicant's zoning impact analysis and site assessment, but I only have enough time to address one. Regarding harm to the public versus hardship on the property owner, we strongly feel this project would indeed be harmful due to traffic, potential damage to creeks and streams, and destruction of our natural environment. The owner could opt to develop like Saranby is doing on the adjoining land recently rezoned to mixed-use Hamlet with twenty-six units on two hundred acres. This would save on costly sewer and water, and they could use resulting development rights elsewhere. It appears that the Saranby formats will be connected to Rico Ridge anyway, so why not make them match? If this is approved and the Merrill folks go to the enormous expense of running water and sewer here, we worry that this would only open up the area to even more high-density development. It would destroy the quaint character of this special place, please don't let this happen. We look forward to the community meeting on the twenty-eighth, so that our concerns then can be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, Arthur.
Good evening, I'm Martha Hall. I live at seventy-six fifty Rico Road, Lot Eleven. My husband and I have lived there for twenty-five years, and we've enjoyed the unique opportunity of being in a rural setting. The concerns that we have are not just the fact that people would be coming, the traffic is already bad on Rico Road. There are no bicycle lanes, yet we have bicyclers, there are no passing lanes, so, therefore the traffic is a mess. I came out of Palmetta the other day and followed a large garbage truck, and in case you haven't had that opportunity, be planning on spending a good bit of your time doing that, because they don't pull over and stop for you. Uh, the traffic is my biggest concern, of course, I have concerns about groundwater, since many of us at Rico Lake have our own wells, and another concern we have is the school. The, there are no school around to take care of the amount of people that this size project would entail. So, our concerns are much like Jackie's and many others in our area who've enjoyed the serene setting and would like to continue to see it that way, and we would appreciate more time and more explanations before you vote on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next.
Ken Hearn, eight-five-two-five, Hearn Road, Chat Hills. My family's been deeply rooted in the Chat Hills community and stewards of our seventy acre property on Vernon Grove Road for eighty-one years. Our land directly borders the proposed Rico Hamlet development. The proposed rezoning, shifting the land designation from rural to misuse Hamlet, represents a profound and irreversible alteration to the character of our rural community. The construction of tw- two hundred and seventy-four residential units as currently planned will fundamentally transform the landscape we cherish, jeopardizing the quiet, rural land designation. This change goes far beyond its aesthetics, though, it carries a significant, significant environmental consequence. Our paramount concern centers on the impact of Longeno Creek, a vital waterway that flows directly through the proposed development and continues onto our property. This creek is the lifeblood of our agricultural operations and sustains the rich biodiversity of the surrounding ecosystem. Increased runoff, potential pollution, does the disruption of natural drainage patterns pose a serious and immediate threat to the health of the creek and consequently to our livelihood and well-being of the local wildlife? However, beyond the environmental concerns, we are deeply disappointed by the complete, and I mean complete, lack of communication from the project's owner, developer, or representative. As adjacent landowners whose property will be directly significantly affected, we have yet to receive a single outreach, and I repeat, we have received no word whatsoever concerning this prop, this project, and it's a substantial undertaking. This lack of transparency is unacceptable. It underscores the need for a thorough review of the proposed plan. We implore you to consider the long-term ramifications of this rezoning. The potential damage to our community, our environment, and our family's legacy, far too significant to ignore. We respectfully urge you to vote against, not defer, this proposed rezoning. Thank you for your time, consideration, and responsible, and to your responsible community planning, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next. Uh, next.
I'm Mitchell Perkins, and my family has been on Rico Rate, I mean Rico Lake, uh, shareholders, since May of eighty-eight. I'm now a shareholder and on the board of directors. We just spent six figures cleaning our lake out from runoff where a twenty-acre property was cleared about ten years ago, that's been running off into our lake. I just see the same thing happening with this development, with the environmental impact of the size they're talking about, and the impact on the, the quietness of the Rico community, the lack of lights, uh, at night, just the total, the total, um, environmental picture is going to change, and it's not for the better.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, next. Kyle.
Uh, yeah, I'm Boise Lyles at seven-seven-eight-zero Vernon Grove Road, which I am highly impacted. Everybody has said it better than I can, but what y'all have made clear in black and white is that Atlanta Water and Sewer is going to be responsible for all the water, and y'all just act like there's not going to be a problem, like they said with runoff. We have wells out here. We have well, I don't care nothing about Atlanta City, but it's being pushed down our throat, and y'all are just saying, hey, if something, what if their safety tank break? what if their safety tank break? Think we're going to be able to boil our water and drink it? No, ourselves, our wells will be contaminated, if not worse. And y'all talking about 150-foot buffer? Really? How long is this run? Come on. He's right. Too many people, and like they said, they just put a sign up on Christmas or Christmas Eve. They just put a sign up. This directly affects my whole thousand. But I have almost a thousand-foot of road running. Let's say it's 950. Well, that's where your 150-foot buffer is going to be, right in my face. And I promise you, if there's problems, I will not look to the Atlanta City Water Board. It will be the city of Chattahoochee Hills that gets sued. And it won't be in court for two years and three years. Y'all have made. Now, do y'all even know how many people have wells? That water's not available out here. Okay? We know that. We take care of ourselves out here if our wells bad. But y'all having to, no consideration, none. And if my property gets damaged, I've had to fight with this city about that to begin with. It's going to get ugly.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Bella Schultz. I live at 7520 Barnes Road, which is the corner of Rico and Barnes, about a half a mile from this project. My concerns is we just zoned one project on Caps Ferry that is just economically unfeasible, corner Caps, 70. This water and sewer issue is very expensive, and in my opinion, it makes these projects economically unfeasible. But if you zoned Mr. Harson's piece, I could zone my piece, and with other pieces, that's 750 houses within a mile of each other. Also zoned a movie studio that was economically unfeasible, and another reason was water and sewer. And I think there is an economic way out of this. The price of this land has greatly increased. I think you could get out of your land by selling large tracts of land at a high price. I really appreciate your time, your service, and your dedication, and let's keep it rural. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Lori Searle. I live at 12600 Whiteside Road in Rico. And I always considered this Rico even before I moved down here. In fact, I think the original Rico sign might have been right around there on Rico Road where this is going to be. I'm objecting to this tonight because we have the opportunity to speak in open public hearing before we have all the information. I don't know if we'll get another chance to say that, so that's why I'm speaking against this. I think my major, couple of major issues is in reviewing the comp plan, in the transportation section, it said the city will never widen paved or gravel roads. And I underscore that word, "never." And even with the projected traffic numbers Mike was able to provide before the traffic study, it just about doubles the amount of traffic on Rico Road. And if you can't widen it, people coming from this development have two choices. Go one way to the Parkway, go the other way to Hutchinson Ferry. Either way, it's pretty bad right now. So I really kind of had that concern. I probably shouldn't admit this. I'll get a virtual pie in the face, but I am a bicycle rider, and I'm a jogger, too, and that's a major route. I will say that this development does check a lot of the boxes. And I know that from your perspective where you sit, that's what your concern is. Does it check the boxes? According to the comp plan, there is no restriction on hamlets. It says you can have pockets of hamlet developments throughout the city. When I thought about that, I'm a seamstress of sorts, and I would think of sewing a piece of garment, where are you going to put the pockets? Occasionally, if you make a mistake and you go like this and you multiply the seam and you put the pocket here, you screw up everything that's underneath there, and you've got to rip the seam out and start over again. I'm saying, you know, before we decide how many pockets and where we want to have it and what we want to have on there, let's consider what's underneath there already and what the garment looks like today and what do we want it to look like tomorrow. I am in favor of property rights, and I'm going to pray and wish that they change their mind and maybe do the hamlet idea like Saranby does because it would be lovely to have 27 homes. And if I ever had the chance to move here again, I would buy one of those on Vernon Grove Road, the most, one of the most beautiful roads in our city. But anyway, thank you for your concern. One more thing, Mike. I went online to the property, Fulton County Property website, and I'm probably doing the math wrong, but the numbers don't add up for the acreage. So if you could, please check that before the next count. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning. Members of City, this is not City Council. Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wrote this this morning. I have three points to make today. One, traffic on Hutchinson Ferry Road. The second was to clarify comments on the Atlanta Noonan Pumping Station. And the third is connectivity to the newly completed sewer line. The petitioned Rico property abuts the recently rezoned Saranby-Hutchinson Ferry Road property, and for all intents and purposes, can be considered as one property. So unless there is a barrier between the two properties, we are no longer talking about just 24 properties on Hutchinson Ferry Road, but really 300. This would be a significant change on a scenic byway without a traffic study. Golf carts already a problem with a 45, with a 45 miles an hour disaster waiting to happen on Hutchinson Ferry Road. I live on Hutchinson Ferry Road, and I see those golf carts, especially in the summertime, around some of those blind curves, and I'm close to a blind curve. As a Fulton County Tax Commissioner, I get calls about all kinds of things. Getting bodies out of the morgue, taking care of people, pit bulls, but also things like homestead and value disputes and conservation covenants, et cetera. But recently, I've been starting to receive calls about sewer problems in Chattahoochee Hills and in Saranby. That is not my areas of expertise. I know nothing about that, and I don't want to be involved with that. But I am concerned about the problems that could arise with the vegetable farm, which is commercial, on Saranby in that same area. This could be a real problem for the community at large. But to the extent it may involve Fulton County, and the fact that it was brought up at a last meeting, I checked the Fulton files. And I would say that I received the letter, the Certificate of Substantial Completion Compliance, and it was issued by the contractor October 22, 2024, and accepted by Public Works Director on October 31, 2024. That means that the sewer lines are available for hookup. And in fact, that was communicated to the developers, and I believe to the City Council also, the city also. And so that is available. And if anybody want to see what a certificate of compliance looked like, I have one right here with me. It's a pretty straightforward document. Our Fulton County staff also informed me that surrounding developers have been so informed. And Code Section 34-509 of the Fulton Code of Ordinance addresses when a development is required to connect to those sewer. So before we go any further, first of all, I think my personal opinion is that this project should be disapproved. And we can't piecemeal these things one at a time because you will never get a full impact. And so before we go any further, I would like to see the impact study for traffic and also to make sure that the developer complies with the Fulton Code of Compliance, 34-509. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, Betty.
Betty Ferdinand, 10985 Hutchinson Ferry Road. I took every real estate course New York State offered. Over the years, we have purchased and have sold more than a dozen properties. As president of the High Point Civic Association and then unincorporated Sandy Springs, I worked with Fulton County Zoning Department, met with developers, and defended our 1,500 household neighborhood before Fulton County Board of Commissioners numerous times. I know and recognize the practices and tactics of realtors and developers. Missing from the November 7 YouTube council meeting video is the exchange between the city and the developer where I heard misinformation, disinformation, and contradictions that made me question if the city and the developer are one and the same entity. Developers rezon properties to increase density, increase value for resale, set precedent for other properties to be rezoned, to connect properties for use, or to combine and flip the whole one, one large parcel. Developers often go bankrupt and are known to mass rezon properties for resale and walk away. The recent rezoning to Hamlet on Hutchinson Ferry Road was clearly unnecessary for 26 homes, except to open the door for the additional rezoning petitions on the docket. The Planning Commission, City Council, and developer are disingenuously leading taxpayers to the brink, one parcel at a time. Each reason for rezoning enriches the developer, but the odds are much greater that taxpayers will be left holding a bag empty of funds but filled with densely zoned, devalued properties lacking sewer, water, adequate fire protection, and deteriorating roads. Consider taxpayers and residents in the rezoning equation by disallowing hamlet connectivity or requiring the developer to install overhead bridges or pedestrians and for pedestrians and cart crossing over major thoroughfares and installing golf cart lanes alone said to start thoroughfares. As publicly stated, there is but one city developer, which means the petition before you is the city developer is the city developer presented under a different name. I suspect any remaining petitions would be differently named from the city's one developer. Based on the 26 structures precedent set by the developer for the hamlet between Hutchinson Ferry Road and Rico Road, this rezoning should contain no more than 39 structures. Deny it and be reminded each rezoning to Hamlet is automatic approval of 200 more structures in the community. Careful, some of those structures that are stored in the stratosphere may end up near next door to you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, please. How much time is left? By all means, by all means.
There's, there's.
The first comment is from Richard Dandy, 7780 Vernon Grove Road. And he is asking, how will our well water be affected and how many occupants will be in the new area? The next is an email or a written statement received from Kim Pesco, 7795 Vernon Grove Road. The statement says, I am opposed to the hamlet. If they wanted to sell formats, I wouldn't be opposed to that as I am not sure if the city can prevent any odd development. The land can be developed under the rural zoning for 13 lots. That would be perfect, so let's try to make that happen. That's all I have.
Thank you. You have reserved time. Would you like to use it?
Certainly appreciate and understand the sentiments in those comments and then taking notes. I really got three that kind of kept coming up in the comments. First is the need for a traffic study. And absolutely warranted, agree. We got good, good feedback at the first public reading. Don't know how many of you may have been here for that with the first reading at City Council. But we took the feedback from council members that a traffic study would be a great idea, and we absolutely agree. And I would suggest to the board that an approval tonight with the conditions of the traffic study, we wouldn't, we wouldn't disagree with. In other words, what, what the traffic study recommends, condition based on implementing those recommendations, we would be okay with because my understanding of what this development is going to bring in terms of traffic is, is going to be minimal. It's going to be light. Now, there are existing issues that have been shown, existing issues that are with regard to traffic. And some of that is what it is, but the, but the, but the study will reveal, you know, reveal the council, but then also show what, what the impact will be. So in doing a lot of these developments of all kinds, it's, it's just going to be minimal in terms of what this project is going to generate. The second one that I heard a lot of was about water and whether neighbors would be impacted either in the sense of the creek or potential erosion and our builder will be mandated under state law and the city's code to comply with Georgia EPD requirements to... I don't know that one, I heard one comment about 20 acres that was apparently disturbed. It caused some, caused a major problem in maybe Rico Lake. I don't know the history of that or what that was. Sounds like maybe somebody didn't use best practices to ensure that the proper items were adhered to and so to ensure that you don't have runoff, to ensure that, that water is properly filtered. Code mandates us to do that. So a project like, like this that is going to have spotlight of being, of having to meet all those code requirements is going to have to, to have to meet code to ensure that the water is safe when it is filtered off of the project. Also, just the, the nature of this is that you're going to have, the, the impervious surfaces are going to be primarily rooftops, as least paved parking, if any is possible. We love the gravel road concept in, in Chat Hills. It saves the developer money. It's less impact to the, to the community and keeps it rural. So, you know, that's, in terms of runoff, we want to keep that as minimal as possible. And it's a win-win on both sides. Our interest is, although it's different, essentially the same, same thing as the residents in that respect. And then finally, the, the community meeting. Yeah, we, we have that tentatively scheduled if, assuming that the, that, that works with the, the city's calendar for not next Tuesday, but the following. And I look forward to answering more questions in depthly from, from anyone that would come out. And we complied with the, the requirements for, for public notice. And although the community meeting is not a requirement of code, my understanding, we, we volunteered, volunteered to do that, and we'll be reaching out to, to... And we'll be reaching out to, to many people in the communities that we can find and, and publish so that we can talk to as many people and get feedback and try to be good community partners. And the last thing that I'll, I'll took note of is Mr. Robinson made the comment as well as Ms. Searle that a mini Saranby would be lovely. And, and I agree, that's what we're trying to do in a way that works for this development. It may not, maybe that we have to get more units than what is in the, the, the development to the south for it to be able to be feasible. But, but it does, we can get there, I think, in a way that meets the code that will make, that will be pleasing to aesthetically to, to look at and something that is kind of cogent with, with what is, with, what will be existing to the, the Saranby development to the south. So with that, I'll turn over my time and we'll answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you, sir. We're going to close the public, you could have a seat. We're going to close the public comment period of this hearing and move. So it is now closed and we're going to move to the discussion period. We usually like to ask for a motion to, for the, for to, to, under which we discuss the, the proposal. Is there a motion?
Yeah, based on what I've heard tonight, I don't think that we have enough information to vote for or against this tonight, based on what I've heard. So I'd like to make a motion that we defer until we receive the traffic study and until the applicant has met with the community. If anybody would like to add to that motion, other conditions, I'm happy.
Well, hang on. Is, is there a second?
Second.
May I, sorry, may I ask, is that a continuation of the hearing or just a deferral on the vote?
It's a continuation. Well, a continuation of the hearing is what, yeah, okay. Which means that the, the public hearing will remain open for the next meeting. That's the motion that's on the, on the floor. Let's move to discussion. And under this motion. And this, at this point, we could also ask questions, for example, of the applicant, the applicant's representative. Sure, go ahead.
Want me to start?
Oh, absolutely.
How many, did you say?
That's Dana, sure.
Which, how many did you say was for, for this proposal? Okay, and how many were against? I didn't take them.
Twenty.
Okay, so there were none, none in favor?
And thirteen opposed, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of questions for Mr. West that I was going to make a comment or two.
Absolutely.
Mr. West. Um, I was at the last council meeting, city council meeting, and they brought up about community meeting.
Yes.
Putting aside the community meeting, I have a question. How many residents, neighbors of ours have you or your client met with in the past, you know, regarding this project?
Regarding this specific project, just myself has been, involvement candidly has been minimal. It's not, most of our, our work on this has been speaking with, with engineers and with, with the applicant. And to, you know, we haven't really engaged with the community yet. You know, you get, get the application filed.
Excuse me, excuse me, ma'am. Let's please.
Yeah, just the, the process, you, you know, you look at the project, you get the, the application filed. Yeah, we, so we'll, we are just now entering the, the phase of, of discussions with the community.
Okay, let me continue. So with the city, so to me, you haven't met with anyone except for engineers and city. But in terms of the neighbors, which would have an impact, you haven't really met with anyone and had their feedback or talked to them?
Well, except for the folks who were at the, the city council meeting.
Talking about before the city council?
No, that's right. We've only been working on it, you know, just before the holidays, so. Not been working on it, on the project.
Okay, when you say holidays, you're saying Thanksgiving?
Christmas, Thanksgiving, right.
Thanksgiving, so a couple of months.
That's right.
Right, okay. So you didn't meet with anyone for a couple of months before the meeting? And then at the meeting, I remember hearing that I think it was Councilperson Foster suggested that you would meet with the community.
Right.
That was about two or three weeks ago, three or four weeks ago.
That's right, sure.
So between that time and now, why didn't you take the time and meet with some of the neighbors?
Well, you know, I mean, candidly, I've got a lot of different clients, a lot of different, different work. So I've been in three different hearings this week, so.
I know, but this is their, their livelihood, this is their life. They're, they've been here a long time. It has an impact on them. You just didn't think that it was necessary?
Well, that's, that's why we're here. No, and that's why we've been working on getting a, a neighborhood, community meeting going.
Okay. So you didn't meet with any between the time that Ruby Foster suggested a committee meeting to now?
And when was the meeting, Mike? Did you clarify?
Last Tuesday, nine days ago.
It was last Tuesday, it was last week. Right, okay.
Okay. But you could have, I mean, someone, someone from the developer could have besides yourself. I mean, probably would have been more important to have one of the members of Rico Investment LLC meet with them, correct? They listen to their concerns and questions.
Well, we also had this, the ice storm, which was kind of odd, that really threw our calendar out of. So I was three days of getting ready.
I'm from Jersey, that wasn't a nice, my wife's from Michigan, please.
In Georgia, hey, let me tell you, as lifelong Georgian, we don't do well with snow and ice down here.
Okay. When, when did you engage the traffic study?
We've started having discussions earlier this week.
So you haven't, when you say, have you signed a firm to complete the traffic study?
I've spoken with a firm a couple of times, yes.
So you haven't actually, you haven't actually engaged them?
I don't know that that's true. No, we, we've, I've had a couple of discussions. They've sent me a proposal. I've looked at other proposals. I've got the, the firm that I want to use. And they're, you know, they'll be getting going in, in the next couple of weeks. I assume that I've advised them that we needed it within a couple of weeks and they act like they can do that.
Okay, but as we sit here today, you haven't engaged, hired an engineering firm that's competent to lead a traffic study?
Yeah, have, have I paid them for the work? No, but do they know they're going to do it? Yes.
Have you signed the proposal where, I guess at the bottom of the proposal would probably say, accepted by, and you sign it and send it back?
No, we haven't.
No, so you haven't. So you have, so there's no traffic study as we sit? That, that's been hired to complete a traffic study?
Yeah, as I stated from the beginning, we're in the process of getting it and it'll, it'll come in the next couple of weeks.
Why did you think that a traffic study wasn't important? Rico Road, hold on. Rico Road is a very important road to the town. We're fairly new here. Being beautifully repaved, Darrell's doing a great job. It's, it's heavily trafficked. And it's not just a, a, a couple of homes, talking about two hundred seventy-three homes plus commercial. And don't forget that it backs up to, or close to newly rezoned Saranby. There's a lot of people.
Sure.
And so why didn't you think, just to make sure for yourself, that this would work?
The reason I didn't initially is in over four, I've done over four hundred commercial and residential developments. And I can just tell you. And, and candidly, I don't think the other, no, at least one other applicant recently that went for the same rezoning classification did not do a traffic study. I've reviewed, at least it was not in the documents that I reviewed with the city. Maybe it's a recent change, a recent requirement. But my look at it and knowledge and experience, one's not necessary, but apparently it's a new requirement. So we're gonna, we're gonna do it.
Well, when you say new requirement, you're talking about like a, a, a legal or, or county or city requirement. I'm talking about a moral requirement. I'm talking about you're a developer in a community. Why wouldn't you think that a traffic study would be important? That if there were questions, you'd say, hey, there's not going to be a problem with traffic. Here it is.
Because I could sit here and tell you that, and all the ones, the traffic studies I've done, traffic counts I've done myself, getting out and counting cars, it's going to be very minimal.
You're an attorney, correct? You're an attorney.
And developer, and developer.
And you're a developer.
And, and home builder. I've done, myself in previous, yeah.
Are, are you an engineer in traffic studies?
Not an engineer.
Okay.
Terrible with math.
Let me continue, let me continue.
Sure.
Under number fourteen, talk about that the the current rural zoning has no reasonable economic use. That's kind of surprising. What authority can you cite? MAI? PhD? Study that'll say that the current rural zoning has no economic use?
Well, you look at it historically, that property has, that's, which is another portion of the requirements and codes and one of the standards is, what has the property been? Has it, throughout the history of the property, what is the use of it been? And what is the, what sort of, what's the highest and best use in terms of the historic? I think it's on the second list of, it's like number thirteen, fourteen on the standards. And cattle maybe would be about the only use that in terms of a rural agriculture, other than perhaps some single-family residences, yes, that could go on rural. But historically, it's just been rural undeveloped land. I wouldn't even call it agricultural land. Some of it may have had one, one point, but I don't know that.
Okay, so you don't have any?
Mitchell, let me just put in context for a moment. It's a very fair question. What Mitchell is referring to are one of the dozen or so, actually it's fourteen, criteria that are, are factors that the commission is supposed to consider in terms in, in rezoning cases. And they're spelled out in the code, but they're also spelled out in the packet. So if you want to see what they are, go to the packet that's online and, and Mike has done a good job of, of laying them out. And, and that, and Mitchell was referring to your response to one of them. Now, I will say that Mike also analyzed them. And on that particular one, Mike not only recognized that agriculture could be a, a feasible use, but also recognized farmettes on that, so.
I, I, I wanted to get to that in a second. I don't, I don't know.
No, I just wanted to put it in context.
But we'll get to that in a minute, but I wanted to come back. So you have no authority, you have no written authority that you can look to say, URL has no economic. You're just being, you're just using supposition. But you have no professional authority saying, you know, you're a lawyer, you have authority. Point, you say, let me show you the authority written. It's in code, it's in, in law. You don't have any, any authority.
I haven't researched it from a legal perspective to bring, you know, sort of put my lawyer hat on and bring my, you know, cases. No, I haven't done that.
Okay.
That, that might be necessary at some point, but I haven't done that yet.
Okay, so let's look at the RL zoning. It's a one house per twenty acre. Right?
I'll, I'll take your word for it.
Well, wait a second.
I've, I've heard discussion that maybe twenty-five, it's, or maybe that's being contemplated, changed to that.
Well, no, 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 as we said, it's one home, one residence per twenty acre, correct?
And existing would be thirteen.
Thirteen home.
Okay.
So I have a couple of questions. One, if you built thirteen beautiful homes, large homes on twenty acres, you're saying that has no economic value?
Well, you'd have to look at what are the, what are the cost of the improvements to bring the improvements in to make that possible. And you'd have to, you know, run the analysis as I, as we sit here. No, I've not run that analysis.
Well, I did a quick analysis and I actually have taught real estate finance at a couple of, of schools. And I've just did a rough number. You can make a lot of money and it doesn't affect the infrastructure. Doesn't mess up the roads. And yeah, there's a lot of use. So what you're saying is not true. It does have use because I can't imagine that they would have a zoning that had no use. Why would you, well, let me ask you this question. When you bought, how long ago did you buy the land?
The, the, the client has, has had it, I don't know, probably ten years.
Okay, when they bought the land, what was its own?
I think it was the, the rule.
So when they bought rural land, they were buying land that had no economic value?
Well, I'd, I'd have to run that analysis. I don't, you know, well, potentially so. If it's been subdivided, some of this land is, you know, it's low-lying land or, or it's going to be in the flood plain, I suspect. Some of the, the, the topos could, could be challenging. I think one of the, the high points is nine hundred feet. There's a couple of peaks at, at eight hundred and something feet. So, yeah, if you go in and you buy a thousand acres, this two hundred and seventy-three may, is probably much less valuable than, say, high and dry land that's, that's flat and ready to build on.
Okay, but you said that the RL has no economic use?
For this property?
For this, well, you just didn't say for this part, but, well, for this property. But when you bought it, you must have thought it had economic use?
Well, it was purchased as a part of the larger tract, so.
Right, so you had to assume at the time, did anyone tell you, did any council member, did the mayor, did anyone in the city ever suggest or promise to you that, that this was going to be changed? That it was going to be rezoned?
No, I can assure you, there have been no promises from anyone at the city, anything like that.
But what would happen if this was not approved? What would you do with the land?
I don't know. Go, go back and we'll, we'll.
Would you sell it for a dollar because it has no economic value?
We'll, we'll see how, well, we'll see how it turns out, you know? Hopefully the, the rights are respected and, and we'll, we'll see how, we'll see how it turns out.
The rights respected on both sides.
Mitchell, I, I think you've, I think you've made your point.
Okay, so.
Well, we've got, sure, we have others.
But I want to make a couple of points, but not to make the way.
If you don't mind, let's see what other question.
Sure.
While he's there.
Sure, sure.
So for example, I, I have a question, a couple of questions. What is the schedule? You have, you have four phases. Right now, what is your thinking about the schedule for development?
The phase across the street, and I don't remember numerically.
That was phase one. Oh, no, were you talking about the north side?
Yes, that would be the last one. That's just, sort of just concept right now in terms of, we haven't even got to a concept on that. So I think obviously one and two is, I think, closer to the center of, let's, actually I have it here. Okay, so actually that's phase three across the street. I think come last and phase one, two, and four would actually phase two and phase four should be the, should be the order. The, and now I'm just going to disagree with myself because fa, phase one is a, that, that very, very small, was roughly an acre of commercial, that's going to come last after everything is, is built out. Could be, could be years from now.
Oh, so it's not, it's not, phase one comes first. It's a different order. When, when would you anticipate, if, if this were to go direction and gets approved, when would you anticipate breaking ground?
I believe that the city has a requirement that, that ground, I don't know, I don't know exactly the trigger, but I think it maybe is a year or two years. But we definitely would be inside of that in terms of starting, so.
And the end of the, if, if everything goes the way you want it to go, what would the end of the, end of that window be, end of the development?
Well, we would, with the property across the street, it's going to be somewhat probably largely driven by the market. You know, if we were to have a housing crisis like we had back in, what, oh seven and oh eight, that's going to put a stop to, to anything. But if, you know, if, if the market goes like it's been going for the last couple of years, I would say it's a, a multi-year project, but, but no longer than five.
Oh, okay, okay. A couple more narrow questions. There is some talk in the packet about, and Mike, I think you brought this up, the anecdotal evidence of quarry on site?
Yes. Yes.
Do you know anything about it? What kind of quarry?
Only that it was a rock quarry. I'm sure that there's folks here that probably know, could probably tell us exactly, but I.
Inner to gravel, whatever it was. Okay.
Yes.
Um, what I couldn't tell, there, on the figure, there's, on the figure on the right, there's a indication of an outcrop and an excavation. Is that the location of that quarry?
I, from, from what I could, it was a clear place and the soil looked a little bit discolored. I have not walked the portion where that, that quarry is. Um, so, but I, I think we're talking about the same thing. If you look at it from an aerial.
Well, it's the, it's the area that's the little yellow circle, um, on, on the, on the figure over there. And, and I guess my, one of my questions was, and, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Well, you may not have the answers. I, I was really. Yeah. Uh, do you know how deep the excavation is at this point?
From what I could tell, it's just a, it's not a significant amount, it's just like, more like a depression.
All right, um.
It's not like a fall hazard or anything like that.
In the, in your materials, you reference and have included a picture of, figure of a special flood zone area? And, and I just actually couldn't tell from that picture where that was located. You said it was adjacent, a small area adjacent to one of the, uh, streams. It, it's in the, yeah, um.
Sounds like, I think there's probably this solid line, like, yeah, it may be labeled here, you know, and there, probably the solid line around the stream, right? Dotted line is buffer, probably that's solid line.
So, you're looking at the.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh huh. Okay, thank you. Um, Mike, I think in your, um, you may want to hang on, I think other folks. I, i- the water you think is about a half, one and a half miles away to run a pipe?
That was, yeah, that was my measurement from the corner of Hutchison Ferry and Atlanta Noonan, where, where the water pipe comes and then turns toward the part of Atlanta Noonan that goes south, yes.
And wastewater about two miles away?
Right, um, from the point identified by the applicant where, um, uh, in another development, they would, they would have, uh, access. On, that's in City of Palmetto property, that part of that inset that cuts into the city.
Now, you, in your comments, you had said, uh, wastewater pipe, uh, hook into Fulton County or septic? But is septic a realistic?
It's sewer, um, it's sewer that will be, would be brought down.
Yeah, but in your comments, you said or septic and it just is.
Right, so, or septic if they are single family detached, um, for, for the, those portions that would be, um, would be relevant. That could apply to the property on the north side of Rico Road.
About of an acre? I mean, we don't, we, the city doesn't designate that, but.
That's right. The health department has limits, so they have to be larger lots. You couldn't do the whole, if they do two hundred and seventy-four, um, lots on the thirty percent that they, um, that would be available to develop, they wouldn't be able to do septic on all of it, but if they had some larger lots, health department would allow septic on some of the larger lot.
Um, other question.
Mr. West, uh, you indicated that you're working on a, a traffic study. Is there a timeline or do you have like a contract that's already in place or exactly, could you expand on that just a little bit more?
Yeah, so that's what the, part of the, uh, discussion that, that Mr. Wolf and I were having earlier. Um, I've spoken with the, uh, the folks that we plan to do the, the traffic study. I've looked at a couple of different ones before that, narrowed it down to folks that, that actually we used before and, and, uh, they did a timely, a good job in a, in a timely manner. And, uh, so I anticipate having, uh, having that document signed and a check sent in the next day or two. And, but they'll, they'll already begun work before they, they get the check, I assume based on our, our prior, uh, course of business with them, so. Um, I expect by the next meeting, we'll, we'll have the, the results pending. I, here, here there's another ice storm coming, so we have to see what, see what next week looks like. We'll, we'll have to come out and get traffic.
Is reasonable for us to expect you'd have it in thirty days.
Yes, sir.
Thirty, okay, good. Um, so I, I see where you have scheduled a community engagement meeting for Tuesday, two weeks.
Yes, sir.
So are you willing and are you available to have as many meetings that are needed so that you could address the issues that have been brought forth so far today? And potentially other concerns that, that the community may have. So I guess my specific question is, will there only be one meeting or are you willing to have as many as possible?
Well, within reason, so I would. The, in my experience, I can think of pro- other projects where I've done where we started out with a community meeting. I remember one we had in, near a, a, now, it's nothing like this community, okay? Uh, where we had two hundred people show up, uh, the first night and we had a second one and about a hundred people showed up. And by the time we got to the council meeting, ten people showed up adamantly opposed. It was the ten people that we couldn't satisfy throughout the other meetings. Everybody else went home happy and they never came back to a meeting. So part of it, I think, is just folks came, a lot of folks came out here tonight, they may not come to it. So just my experience, one or a couple of, of, uh, community meetings is, is probably sufficient.
Will, we're done? Question?
There you go. Yeah, I'd like to, um, better quantify and more directly from the applicant nail down this issue of both the water and the sewer, because I think the response and the information we're getting right now has just been from staff and just kind of best guess. You didn't refute what he said, but.
That's right.
I, I'd like it to be, um, part of this application, uh, maybe you can answer the question tonight, but what in linear feet is it to your point of connection and water to your, you know, sag boundary and what is it in linear feet? Is it, uh, to, to get to sewer and are, I know you're planning to go through some other property that you have, um, uh, related, uh, interests in, but, uh, can you get all the way there or is there still some right away acquisition that might be needed?
Uh. Understand, understand the question and, uh, it's a good one. It is contiguous property. I don't have the exact measurement. I can get that for you, uh, at, at the next meeting, presumably if, uh, it's deferred and, um, but, but it's a, it's essentially a straight run without the need for easements. And, um, our understanding is looking at the numbers, uh, it's, it's, it's economically feasible. Otherwise, as you know, uh, bringing sewer is very costly. Um, yeah. Get that wrong, you can waste a lot of time and money.
Gi- given the centrality of sewer and water to this application, I'd like to motion that we amend the motion on the floor, uh, to include in the deferral and analysis of the, the sewer and water, uh, providing the linear feed of each and a, uh, and a statement to the fact of, uh, that there's no right away acquisition needed to, to be able to get that water and sewer to the site.
Is, was that the representative, no right away?
That's what, that's what he represented, but.
My understanding, based on what I can recall.
But if we're, but if he comes back with the linear footage, then just put that, that same stuff in the analysis.
Motion has been made to amend. Um, do we have enough of what the motion was?
I think so. It, um, there was a, uh, right, number of linear feet and, um, some assertion or confirmation, uh, or a statement about whether right away acquisition is needed, I guess, who? Is that?
Yeah, linear feet, sewer, water, and a statement about right away.
Now, I would. It's an interesting question, um, whether right of way would be required even though we own property on both sides of the road? Technically, the road is an easement across the property, so the, um, but would we be interfering with the easement rights we gave the county, I suspect, when that road was given? I don't know. So there's a little, little bit of minutia there, but it's, yeah, right. But, thank you, yes, sir.
Um, anything else, Will, at this point?
Sure.
Will, are you finished? Okay, I'm a little, just want to get something straight here. Um, were you saying that you're contemplating having the sewer hook up to, um, another county? Another, another city, another city?
Um, so, no, there, uh, there is sewer that will, that runs from, let's see. I don't know if it's, forgive me, I don't know if it's Fulton County or if it's City of Atlanta or, or W S A. I don't know, there's presumably a W S A, okay. Staff, Mike's telling me it's, it's county, so it would, it would all be Fulton County.
Right, but, um, you're in. Um, this is Chattahoochee Hills, the development.
Right.
And where would the connection be made in from another town?
Uh, no, it's, it's, it's Fulton County sewer that's running through City of Chat Hill.
Right, so you would, you would have to hook up to the Chattahoochee Hills sewer?
I don't, n- no, uh, Chat Hills, I don't know that they even have sewer, but I don't think they do out that far.
Okay, well, that's a whole nother issue, which hopefully we'll be able to address, but I was just curious because under their code, any developer, if there's a public sanitary sewer system, um, you have to connect. You can't do anything else, you can't do septic, it has to connect.
Well, that, that, that's the intent.
Okay.
I think for now, um, we, there are no other questions for the applicant at this point, um, applicant's representative, so if you want to, but don't go anywhere, please.
Yes, sir.
Um, if you don't mind sitting, Mr. Morton, I have a question. Um, uh, one, one of the key, um, well, on the Longino Creek. Now, it, it looks to me like it flows to the Chattahoochee River.
Mm-hmm.
And so it flows from this property across Vernon Grove. It does not flow back to Rico Lake.
Correct.
Right, um, that's just one question, but, uh, clarification, but the issue of protection from sedimentation, from development, the issue of protecting wetlands are very serious issues. And it is, and, and so I, I, from your standpoint as city planner, the, the, um, the, the development director basically, i- is there? Um, what are the tools that you use to make sure that the stream is protected when there's development?
So there are, um, uh,
Two.
Uh, I guess I'll use the word phases, right? You're worried about the development phase? Sedimentation of the ground when it's been disturbed into development and you're worried about post-development where you have runoff. Um, usually it's not as much of a sedimentation issue at that point, hopefully the ground covers are established, but you're worried about, um, flows, right? Um, uh, runoff from impervious surfaces, um, in, in peak levels, the way they didn't peak before as they just ran across the ground and, um, overflowing in creeks and scouring and that sort of thing. So, so there are two levels to the question. Um, uh, and then we have, um, several things in state and city code to provide protection. Um, the streams all have, um, buffer requirements and an additional, um, setback requirement. So there's fifty feet of required stream buffer on each side, um, measured from the bank. And then an additional twenty-five feet of impervious surface setback. You can't build within seventy-five feet, you have a hundred fifty foot wide corridor around each stream that can't be disturbed, so some filtering of, um, all, any water, any, um, surface water, um, happens within those, um, within those buffers. During the construction phase, um, you have the attention of both, uh, E P D, um, which is the carry of the National Clean Water Permit, um, and you have the city, uh, both, uh, monitoring things that happen. So the, um, the developer, um, if they get rezoned, they have an approved concept plan. Planning Commission approves the preliminary plat, uh, they do the engineering work, um, uh, study the hydrology, turn in a they call hydrology study and, um, they turn in their, um, development plans, what they plan to do in that phase, um, which includes a multi-phase erosion control plan. Um, those go to the state, to E P D, um, and also to the city, they're reviewed by an engineer and, um, the, the state has a, a book uh, that's been published on erosion control methods, so there's silt fence required, there are detention ponds, um, uh, there are a whole variety of, of.
Generally referred to as B M Ps.
That's right.
Best management practices.
That's right, that's right. And so that's construction phase silt, um, that is supposed to get, uh, cleaned up and filtered um, and slowed down, um, onsite by the, by those methods. And then once, once the construction's over, um, there may be, um, some detention required. Um, we have a lot of use of, in the city of impervious surface, um, there's a lot of what's called green infrastructure, various methods that, um, uh, uh, either slow down or filter or, uh, uh, control, um, direct, uh, flows of, of water in the post-development phase. Um, and again, part of the goal of those is to spread out those peaks, um, when the, the water runs quickly off of impervious surfaces, um, slowing it down so that, um, the flows off the site, uh, more closely resemble the kinds of flows you would have gotten before the development happened.
Understood. I, I'm, this is, uh, not, I think, worthy of a condition because these are external requirements. Uh, but it would probably be very helpful if you could spend some time at the public meeting explaining your plans, not only for uh, construction, during construction and whether you're gonna use heightened B M Ps or just regular old B M Ps. And secondly, whether, uh, during post-development, um, how are you handling stormwater? I know there's some references, general references to it, but, um, there isn't a lot of detail about how you're actually handling uh, post-construction stormwater. And so I know I would like to hear some more about that and because this is, Longino Creek's important. It is attributable to the Chattahoochee River and needs to be, there needs to be a very protective approach to it. Thank you. Um, it's a suggestion. Uh, I, I don't have anything else from my standpoint. If anyone else, otherwise, I think we move to, uh, move to a vote. Um, you have?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh.
By all means.
Um. First of all, thank you. Um, and I'm glad you brought up the sewer and Hernan, um. So I wanted to share the details uh, of information presented to the city council announcing, um, the extension of the Fulton County sewer system to Chattahoochee Hills. Um, I'd like to hand out copy.
To the com- commission?
Sure.
You got one?
Thank you. So Lori Searle did a very nice job. She was, I guess, the council for three, and you'll see a picture with the mayor, the ribbon cutting. Um, and this was in October twenty, uh, September of twenty twenty-two. Um, attached to the newsletter is a slide showing the location of the planned pumping station. And in the lower left-hand corner of the slide, hard to read, but there's the comment that the new system calls for the replacement and removal of the Serum V wastewater system. I suppose this means that the Georgia E P D, along with Fulton County and the city, recognize that the current system, Serum V, is inadequate to protect, uh, our local environment. Uh, also, at the, at the end of it, was being distributed his correspondence from Dave Clark or David Clark. He's the director of Public Works for Fulton County. And he emailed just before Christmas indicating that the pumping station on Atlanta Noonan Road was issued a certificate of substantial completion. was issued a certificate of substantial completion of Hernan, which is akin to a certificate of occupancy for a new home construction on October 23rd, 2024, and that the city and adjacent landlords were notified that the pumping station was operational and ready to accept load. This disclosure directly contradicts what the mayor and Barney Nygren represented in the city council working session and meeting on November 6th. So my question to Mike is, in your presentation, your questions and the answer, why isn't the city staff recommending that the current applicant fired by city ordinance to hook up to the Fulton County sewer? When you wrote it, why didn't you make it a condition? Why didn't you say they intended to, why didn't you make it a condition?
It wouldn't be possible to develop as they proposed without hooking up to sewer.
But it wasn't a, you didn't write, you just?
I, I didn't feel a condition was necessary. We can certainly add one.
Okay. All right, that's fine. Let me just continue. When you wrote in number one, I think my, my point is, I guess we're, as. We're being asked to render an important decision based on insufficient and incomplete information. It's just not for the traffic study. We are making very important decisions here, and we need all the information. For example, you wrote on the utilities that it should not have an impact. But, you know, to me, shouldn't be, should is not a good enough word. We need just to, and you don't have the expertise. I can't blame you. But we would need to know definitively whether or not this is going to have an impact on the utilities. And quite frankly, I would have thought that the developer would have, would have investigated that ahead of time and could say, this will not have any impact on. I'm not going to go into the traffic except to make sure the traffic study recognizes that Rico Road has been under construction. So I don't want them coming back with, oh, very low rates, because it's still being finished. And it's really not representative of what a road is typically like. And especially with the bad weather, because if you have an ice storm, people aren't driving on it, and they're out taking part in them. So we need to have something that's accurate. The, the number 10, it should not adversely affect adjacent properties. Again, should is not sufficient. And quite frankly, as you know, because every time I'm up here, I say it, I speak with a lot, a lot of people. Serumby, I live in Serumby and outside of Serumby. For this, I was outside of Serumby. I was going outside. There's not one person that said that they're in favor, that, that it's going to affect their, their property. Even here tonight, there's not one, there's not one person here that's saying that. And finally, on number four, four, you say other conditions that may give supporting grounds for either approval or disapproval. And I have my typical five. So does the existing zoning pose economic detriment on the applicant? No. They could build 13 beautiful homes on 20 acres, 13 on 20 acres. That's not an economic detriment. Is there zoning of direct benefit to the community? Tell me any benefit. Please, tell me one benefit. Anyone. There is no benefit. Are the residents, neighbors within the community in favor or against the rezoning and the results it may cause? I haven't met one person that's in favor of it. If someone's in favor, let me know. Was it, was the applicant first, when he first purchased the land, was it aware of the existing zoning? Yes. And is there an overriding benefit to the community by simply keeping the existing zoning in place? Less traffic, less impact on infrastructure? Is mindful of the environment, consistent with rural nature of why people want to live in Chat Hills? And that's why we moved here. There are no negatives by keeping it the way it is. And the developer can go ahead and build, have a great development on 13 with 13 homes. So, right now, we have no idea how this development will affect the utility. We provided no traffic study. We've had no environmental impact study. This is the first I'm hearing about possible. That's be studied. It does not pose an economic hardship. It would have no benefit to the community. The community is overwhelmingly against it. The applicant was aware of the zoning when he bought it, and there is a very significant sewer issue that needs to be addressed. And finally, by simply keeping the existing zoning, it maintains its rural nature. So I know you want to have it deferral, but why? Why, how are those issues going to be addressed in 30 days? They should have been addressed ahead of time. I'm a developer.
So, so Mitchell, those criteria, those five factors you just said, those aren't in the code, are they?
No, they're in multiple legal filings that have been in lawsuits.
Yeah, in, in other jurisdictions?
Georgia.
Okay, sure. Other jurisdictions, Georgia. But nonetheless.
But there's common sense. There's just common sense.
Okay, so those.
There's no benefit, there is no benefit. Who benefits from this development?
Again, that's not one of the criteria.
I'm asking you as a human being, please.
There are more homes, more people. That's not one of the criteria we look at in, under the code here. So I, I appreciate your common sense approach to it, but it's really not one of the criteria we look at. So at this point, we're going to move to the motion. And I would like to hear the motion as amended, restated.
Can I make a motion to disapprove it? Why, why have a motion to, why? I don't see the benefit.
Well, we have a motion to defer that's been amended.
Okay.
To include some evaluation. And so I'm not sure amending that to disapprove is, is in order, but.
Fair enough. No, fair enough. Let me ask you a question because I'm not familiar with. So if we defer it, what happens?
Well, it comes up again at our next meeting, at the next.
And then we just continue?
We'll continue the public hearing.
That's fair, fair enough.
May I say something?
Yes.
I do think you have a valid point with regards to the traffic study. I live on Hutchinson Ferry Road, and I drive past there every morning where Rico comes in. And I could tell you the traffic over there is less right now while that road is under construction. Would it be unreasonable to do the traffic study once the road completes and traffic is back to normal condition?
What's the timing on that? Robert, do you know? Well, I think that once the traffic study comes in, it's going to be subject to not just our review and the city council's review, but the public's review as well. But nonetheless, that's a, I, I don't know if that's feasible or not.
Right. I don't know what the impact would be on schedule hardship on the applicant, but it does make sense that, that the traffic study happened for things like DRI traffic studies, right? They have specific rules about when you can do them related to when school's in session and, and things like that. There, there are common sense rules about when a traffic study should be considered legitimate and, and when the, the measurements are out of normal, right? And so it does make sense that the road should be in, not under construction when the, the counts are taken.
Mike, I want to ask a question. A lot of discussion about detriment to the community. If, if this were subdivided into 13 lots, 20 acres, what conservation are they required to? Could he clear cut all the trees?
Yeah, this, right, yeah, there's nothing.
Well, there's a tree ordinance. They have a 12-page robust tree ordinance that has to be followed. They can't do anything. They can't take down the trees.
What, what conservations required?
No permanent protection. That's correct. We do have a specimen tree ordinance. So lots created after the date that was adopted. If they cut trees, they cut, I'm sorry, specimen trees, they need to either replace them or pay a recompense.
I didn't read that it was specimen trees. I'll have to reread it.
All right. So you're not making a further motion to amend at this point?
No.
Okay, appreciate it. So we have a motion? I'm sorry, John, you, you wanted to make a motion to?
To amend the traffic. Amend the amended motion to include the traffic study once the road has been completed and traffic conditions are back to normal, seems to.
Well, I think that makes sense. What it may delay is it may delay when this comes up for a vote, not only for us, but for the city council as well. But I think it, anybody object to this? Could be, could be.
I think that's smart.
I guess, Will, do you mind?
We're still within that. But Will is.
That's right.
Yeah, it still does. It still could work. Will, do you have objection? And your amendment to the.
Does anybody else have an objection? So what is the, let's restate what we are. Is a motion to defer by continuing the public hearing until the next meeting. But once that comes, if it's not, if the traffic study's not spared or it's not satisfactory or whatever, we can be deferred again. And that is, and also, it's for purposes of an evaluation. Why don't you restate it? An analysis.
Water and sewer? And I assume you're looking for more than just a positive or negative, but an identification of what or where, if, if it's needed?
Going to be an expensive one. Okay, and then as amended, John, to, why don't you restate what your amendment is?
My amendment would simply be that the traffic study be concluded when the road is actually back up to normal.
Did the traffic counts when the counts are taken?
Good enough for you?
Dana, good enough?
Okay, so those are the, that's the motion on the floor. All in favor, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? The motion carries, and that public hearing, a portion of this meeting is over. Well, that's, that's our, that's what we have voted on here in terms of our vote to delay our review. And I don't think the city council could ignore everything we do here if they want at next meeting. But that's our, we're a recommending body. We're an advisory body. So, but yes, I think they, they would, interested in this.
And so the continued hearing will have to be re-advertized, probably have to place that ad somewhere within the next week or two. Should I go ahead and advertise for next month?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And unfortunately, it's, I know it's extra work, but I think we need to do it since we've continued.
It sounds like the public has an appetite for it and maybe would have liked it to happen already. So I think, yeah.
It, it's really, it's a voluntary decision on your part, as on the applicant's part, on whether, what, and where, and when you do that. And I think you've heard enough information and feedback that there isn't an appetite for. So let's move on. Our next item on the agenda, we are done with that issue, that public hearing. We have no old business on the agenda. We're going to new business. And the, the, the first item on the agenda can, it can be a little confusing. Mike, do you want to, the first item on the new business, discussion of new presentation of section seven of the recent UDC text amendments as a model for consideration, as a model for, I tell you what, let's. Thank you very much. We'll give this a couple minutes. Gee, nobody wants to hear about?
Yeah, they are gone.
Thank you all for coming. There will be a meeting, a city council hearing is advertised, the next city council meeting, which is the fourth Thursday of the month. And as you know, we'll be having another one at the next planning commission meeting as well.
All right, get out the bourbon.
And folks in the room, we're continuing the meeting. All right, let's go ahead.
Okay, so, sorry, do you want me to?
No, I, I just want to say this is not a review of the text amendment. This is a review of a procedure, a process.
That's right. So the text amendment that you all reviewed back in, I think it was September, went to city council, did not get approved because there was some feeling that somehow didn't understand it well enough. There was a request for a sample section, section seven was chosen, with a new presentation of the information. And so the consultants put together what you have in front of you for section seven, and it went to city council for a look. They seemed to like what they saw, but they thought, and I agree completely, that you all should get a look at it. And if you like this presentation, the, the material will come back looking more like this. This section is a little unique within the, 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 the overall text amendment. But anyway, if anyone has comments, like it, don't like it, think it would be better if there was something added or removed or changed, that's kind of the point of this. It's not about the actual content.
Yeah, no, right. Mike, as I'm looking at it, you've got a, what would be called a red line or track changes. And then you've got rationale that's associated with it. And it's not usually the way I am learned to look at things. I usually use that separately, but combining them is fine. I don't, I.
I think they did a good job. I like it.
I, I would generally put, no, it's fine. It's fine. I don't have any. I would put them in margin comments, but that's okay. But that's okay.
That's, that's another, that's another software program.
So does anybody have any comments on this? Okay, well, Ben, I think you've gotten our feedback.
So, that's right. And so you may be seeing this, if, as I expect it to proceed, we'll get this back from the consultants with everything presented this way. Probably another joint work session where it can be presented to you all in city council, and then of course, go through the regular process, city council first read, public hearing, planning commission, public hearing, city council.
Second item on new business is the planning commission meeting calendar, but I want for the rest of this year. But I, and one of our delays was, we had a hiatus here, where we didn't meet for a while, but we also had to wait really for the city council calendar to get finalized too. But one of the items that I think merges a little bit that I wanted to talk about with the bylaws is, is working sessions for the planning. I, the, the bylaws have a concept in there, and we'll get to the bylaws in a minute. But, and, and that's really a reboot of the bylaws, the bylaws issue. But one of the items is whether or not we want to have working sessions and schedule working sessions for the, the planning commission. And I think it's a good idea, but there's a large question about when we do it. And I think it's a good idea, but there's a large question about when we do it. I think we should, frankly, I'll just say, I think we ought to book them. I think we ought to put them on the calendar. And then if we don't need them on a particular agenda, we don't have them. But I think we ought to book them on the calendar. Which brings up the $64 question is, when do we do it? Do we try to do them the way the city council does, which is a, have the working session before the planning commission meet? Do we run them on a separate day? And, and without being too, belabor this much more, we have some members here that just can't do an earlier meeting, just can't do it. So does anybody have a suggestion? How they would like to do it?
Why are you looking at me? Why don't, instead of, I'll bring up a calendar. As issues come up, why don't circulate saying, hey, I think we should have a work session. And what is everyone scheduling?
We have to advertise. We have to advertise. So having, but go ahead. I mean, it could be on an ad hoc basis.
Yeah, the public meeting advertisement requirement, I believe, is just 24 hours for a work, something like a work session.
How long are the sessions?
They really vary, right?
I think the last one ran long.
But if you schedule a work session in front of a other meeting, pushing it back.
No, I think you have to, once you have a, a public meeting.
So what's happened, we've had several times, several instances where work session had pushed a, a, a meeting back. And my understanding, and I will absolutely defer to city attorney or Dana clerk for a long, long time. When you have a meeting scheduled, then it just gets pushed back. It's not, it hasn't been a problem. I'm led to believe it's not a real problem. You can't do it earlier, right? You can't go ahead and start at a time before it's been advertised. But if it's advertising, it gets, ends up getting pushed back for some reason, that tends to not be a problem now. I'm sure there becomes a point where it would be, right? I don't know what that, how much time that would be, but that's my understanding.
So for one of the options would be to have a work session start at six, for example, the public meeting start at seven. Whenever we get the kid done, we'll get done.
Get it done.
So then would all meetings then begin at seven o'clock?
Yes.
Yeah, that's regular, the regular time would be seven o'clock. Okay.
And, and I guess, you know, it's an interesting idea and we could do it on an ad hoc basis, an as needed basis.
Let me ask this, there's a conflict with the work session. Some can't attend the work session.
Yes.
Seven o'clock?
We'll still need to have a quorum. Working session.
You, you wouldn't have to, there are no votes taken. You wouldn't have to have a quorum at the work session.
I know. Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, forums still, any, any meeting for them.
I'm not the clerk.
Yes, Will. But you have to bring snacks.
I'll check my snack budget.
Why don't we try it?
I don't think we'll end up having a time for a break between them. I know that the city council tries to do. So then the sub-question is, do we want to calendar them or do you want to do it on an ad hoc basis? One thing I don't think is a good idea is to, is to have the regular public meeting start at different times. I think we need to have a set. So if we're, I don't know, my inclination would be to book them right now and then call them off.
Okay.
But that gets the public, well, they're both can be public, both open. The actual public business meeting be seven o'clock. Is there a problem with that with staff? Robbie, is there a problem with that? Of course Diane's not here, right?
Mike, so we have, you know, if this, this doesn't get accomplished for 30 days, anything? Just a meeting?
No, unless you wanted to continue session of the bylaw.
Let's go ahead and, I, I would suggest that we go ahead and book it, call it off. And next meeting may be the perfect first example of calling it off. But, and Dana, I'm not sure.
Right, I mean, you often
Yeah, yeah.
What about the other? What about the action?
I mean, the, the consequence of not calling it off in time is there's, there's no, I mean, it just means, if it's not properly posted, it just means that you can't have the meeting. You can't have votes. The votes don't count. So canceling something is, right, it's like you don't have a quorum, right? Sometimes you don't have a quorum. You don't know until people don't show up. Can't have the meeting.
All right, I think that, I do have enough for in the calendar?
I think so. I'm just going to add, I'm just going to add at the top, I'm going to say work session, six o'clock, meeting seven o'clock.
Yeah.
Is everyone happy with the dates?
Well, I have to tell you, since he's in the room, I'm going to ask them. Do you see a problem with that? Work sessions at six, public meeting seven?
Right.
So let's go to the last business item, bylaw. Mentioned this and we came up with last October and then we paid it. Holidays, but Mike, you've got some corrective things to do in there, just aren't accurate anymore. But it's also an opportunity. Valuated, try to get into the bylaw. All right, so this is an opportunity. Please look at it. No action on it particularly, except for this related issue. That's all this is. Get it back on our agenda. It's time to, you're going to have some changes to it, so as long as we're making some changes. And they're necessary because things, code has changed, so just. Oh, jeez, I'm sorry. Mike, so? Think so, and I can we discuss it?
How do we come back and talk about it?
Yeah. And let's just, let's come back and talk about it. Let's come back and, if this takes two or three meetings, it takes two or three. And let's just try to get them right, because they're going to be there. That's my thing. I'm sorry. It don't work so well. All this is to say.
All, all this is to say, you know, look out for this coming, probably first quarter 2025. It's not the historic commission doing this. This is the city doing this, led by all the commission. So all the commissions are, you know, welcome and encouraged to participate. You know, just for nature of getting a group that can manage itself, I think the idea would be that each commission would probably send one or two people, make sure they got representation of one or two people, but it's not, it's not mandatory. It's voluntary for everybody. And it is an open meeting, you know, supported by the city council, so it would be open to everyone. There would be no issue with anyone feeling like they couldn't go because they were without some forum. I think I got most of the talking points out there. Two to four meeting, first quarter. One of the suggestions that came up out of the Parks Commission meeting was to make the first meeting a tour of the historic properties. And so that'll probably, it may not be all here. It may be out and about some, but it's still still forming in terms of what this is and what, what days it happens. So people look out and in case, you know, it, each mission, I think, has its own kind of important role to play, but, you know, historic preservation is
Sorry, you're, you're not off the hook at this point. You're just, so I, I'm not sure there's an action item for us tonight on this. This was a heads up. It's a heads up and there'll be an opportunities, but until we get some, I think, specific direction about how we participate in. It's well explained. Allison, since you've joined us, is there anything you would like to add? As Will's done a very good job.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to, to share this information. I trust that whatever Will said was spot on, but I would just add that we appreciate the support of the mayor and council in taking the recommendation of the historic commission to bring together a panel of our peers from various commissions in the city. So our chairman, Lila Ryan, attended the Parks Commission on Tuesday and presented this idea to them. And then because we had planning commission tonight, I had agreed to come and share this information with y'all as well. This is informal in terms of the how you can participate or what the action item would be. We're going to leave it up to each commission. You would all be welcome to come and participate, or if you wanted to designate one or two folks. We're, we're making it very open, very transparent. So everything will be advertised. It'll be open to the public. Folks can come and, and hear the discussion and weigh in. But we just think it's a great opportunity to bring together the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Parks Commission, the Historic Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Board to provide some insight to our leadership about what the opportunities are for the half a dozen or so sites that are under city ownership. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have. I hope what I just said sounded a bit like what Will may have said before I entered. But again, we just really appreciate your consideration and your support for what I think is going to be actually a really great opportunity for us to all come together and work on this. So.
Any questions for Allison? Look, it sounds like a great idea. And I, I think there may be an action item if we want to make sure we have someone there, not that everybody can't do it, make sure we have someone there. We may want to consider at some future meeting designating someone, but when would the first of these happen again?
So we have one more commission that we need to reach out to. We need to get in touch with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And my guess is that what we will try to do is organize some sort of tour. Probably would aim for a date in February or early March, right? So we want to hopefully see clear to have most of the snow behind us and other inclement weather, but I think that we would probably look for an opportunity to convene on a Saturday morning together and to just go take a tour of all of the, the various city-owned historic properties so that we all kind of know what we're talking about. And at that point, folks can either decide they're really excited to get involved and participate, or they may say, thanks, this isn't really my thing. But either way, that's my guess is that late February, early March, we're going to convene some sort of a tour, you know, for all of the properties and invite anybody who would be interested to join, including mayor and council, members of the community and members of the specific commissions.
Thank you. I think that sounds like first, we wouldn't do anything until after that initial tour, so.
All right. Sounds great. Thanks, y'all.
Those are, that's new business, staff reports, but do we really have anything, Mike?
Nothing in particular. First of all, I, I hope it didn't sound indifferent to the plight of people who might show up to a meeting that got canceled at the last minute. I think that we would be able to cancel the work sessions around the time the agenda goes out, I would expect on, on a regular basis. In any case, so just wanted to remind everybody that the, the Bucart rezoning is, is, the application is in. They're in the DRI process. All those forms now have been submitted, so in theory, the press is aware of it, or maybe hearing, hearing about it, but they're still in the DRI process. It'll be some months before they complete that process and we begin with the first reads and hearings, but that is ongoing. Also, with the moratorium, we had an application we were not able to accept for some, bringing up a proposal in Campbellton that had been addressed before by council, right across the street from the gas station. And so I expect that to come in when the, when the moratorium is over. And we'll have to consider that. We had some planning work done in the meantime, since the original council action on it. Some of that action has expired and that's why they've got to come back and reapply. That's all I've got. If you're interested in building permitting numbers, I wasn't printing things out anymore. I didn't send you a link. I could, but it's all available on the website. We've got both December numbers and you can like, look at calendar year numbers. Total number of permits was about the same as last year, I think 199 versus 200. And then new residences permitted, I believe, were 65 this last year and 56 the year before, if I'm remembering the numbers correctly. So an increase of, you know, whatever, eight or nine percent.
Thank you.
One question, Mike, do, are you allowed to to us? Should council on, for December 20th, they were supposed to put in questions for the, they want deal with the moratorium, so that I think there, can you share those with us?
I think it's all a matter of public record. I don't know if they are, if that list is the official, yeah, I, yeah, I don't see any reason why not. Let me.
Okay, motion for adjournment? Do you all want to hear that now? By all means.
I'd want to have public.
It is a public, still a public meeting.
I know, but that was not on the
It's not on the agenda. Let's do it the next meeting. Or we can do it both times. Alright.
You want to do it both, that's fine.
He's a busy man. Uh, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Richard, thank you for stepping.